Oh my goodness.
Are you talking about the light behind him?
No, it's it's just you can't see him really, you can't really.
Okay, well, yeah, that's why I think.
A picture so you.
Maybe.
You can see the whites of your eyes.
Maybe I need to um get a desk lamp.
It's not.
But I think what happened too is the light from there. The sunlight.
Right.
Beams towards the camera.
But it's better than it was the other evening when it was dark.
Been from the beginning, the beginning, you could hardly see anything.
I think it's the um contrast thing.
The only reason why I said something is because the leader needs to be seen. We don't, it doesn't matter for us, but the leader needs to be seen.
I'm having problems today, but I have other times, but um still, it would be nice to. Nothing I know of. I think you're good for now, but maybe we can find a lamp. Yeah, that's a dark room all over, isn't it?
Yeah. There's no light in there except for them.
No, 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 what it is is that um.
The light's coming from the back, that's.
The camera. See, I put my hand there, you can see it clearly.
Something's not right, you can see Lorraine really well, can't see you.
It's the where where the light is by the camera.
Well, whatever it is, I'm just saying.
Yeah, like I need to get a li- a light for my um. Yes.
You're good for now, maybe the next time. Don't think, Mytr.
I absolutely, absolutely. Well, that's different, what'd you do? You have two of you.
I'm look- looking for my phone.
Oh, wow.
Now, that's a big difference.
Cause the background. Is that right?
I'm in same room, same lighting, it's the camera with the light.
Okay. Well, now. That.
What can, does it echo?
You mean sound? What? What? What did it say?
I can't hear anything, he's not talking, he's got it on mute.
I was trying, cause he, I can't um.
Uh, we could, we, it's not.
Is what echoing? Oh, when you switch cameras, didn't the sound echo?
No, I'm saying right now it's not, I don't know.
It's not.
Or maybe I use the speaker from my phone.
Oh, it's echoing time.
Because it's so close to this other one.
Is your volume on?
Got it off.
So the Philadelphia church had little strength, kept his word and had not denied his name. The name of Jesus Christ, the only begotten son, because he's the one doing the talking to the churches.
Amen.
The reward for that, that those of the synagogue of Satan will worship at the feet of Philadelphia, which I can't imagine being a reward, but says that, and what is the synagogue of Satan? Go back to Revelation two nine, it says, them who say they are uh Jews and are not, but are of the synagogue, but are uh but are the synagogue of Satan. So a Jew believes in the Messiah and the one true God, they don't believe in pagan deities. That was a point that I noticed, um, cause you wouldn't find a Jew even today that ever thought that, you know, Jesus was actually God himself, uh, the the Messiah was expected to be God himself, but.
Right.
Read, read that again, cause I missed some of it.
Uh, Revelation three eight to the church of Philadelphia that he said they had little strength, have kept his word and have not denied his name, whose name? The name of the only begotten son of God, because he's the one talking to the churches. What is um, oh, the reward of for not denying his name and having and keeping his word, is that those of the synagogue of Satan will worship at the feet of them. And what is the synagogue of Satan? In Revelation two nine, Jesus said, them who say they are Jews and are of are the synagogue of Satan. A Jew believes in the Messiah, the one true God, not pagan deities. I'm sure there's more to that.
Where, where did you get that from?
What, the thought?
Mm-hmm.
Well, um, it's true, Jews believe in the Messiah being.
No, 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 I'm talking about the whole thing that you were reading and stuff.
Um, no, I was just studying deny, it's a little bit further, I started out in Joshua, and today I did Revelation three verse eight and two, verse nine is where it took me because of the synagogue of Satan definition. Those who deny his name are the synagogue of Satan. Is what this is saying, because I have to go to it right here. I know thy works, this is the Smyrna church, and tribulation and poverty, but thou art rich. I know the blasphemy of them, which say they are Jews and are not, but are the synagogue of Satan. And three verse eight to the Philadelphians says, I know thy works. Uh, behold, I have set before thee an open door, that's the door of the holiest place, and no man can shut it, for thou hast the little strength, and has kept my word and has not denied my name. Behold, I will make them who are the synagogue of Satan, which they say they are Jews and are not, so saying both times and saying that is what the synagogue of Satan is equal to, to say they are Jews, they claim they are Jews and they are not. I will make them to come and worship before their feet and know that I have loved thee. So that's another thing behind not retaliating is that we have this, we have the pleasure of God on us because of what we believe, that we're obeying the truth. And they're going to actually have to admit, I thought about Ellen White, I thought she deserves that reward. That they are gonna come and say, God has loved you. It's true. And we are not of God. She deserves to have that reward, she needs it in the, but you know, I don't see that as my own, I don't see that as a reward, but maybe later. I don't know, but it's amazing that God wants to do that. He's very vindicating, he's completely fair. We don't lose anything by not retaliating.
Yeah, it just lowers you.
Yeah.
No, nobody's benefiting, it's is a uh way of exhausting the the energies that could be used to do righteousness. Alright, here is the study. He calls a fire. This just came out of this. Meeting. Now I'm gonna do what you just said. Revelation three eight.
Mytr, I wanna share with you the beginning of my study deny sometime, it's amazing from Joshua, book of Joshua.
We're listening.
Already know? Okay, super, uh, Joshua twenty four twenty seven, verse fourteen says, fear the Lord and serve him in sincerity and truth, put away the gods that is served on the other side of the flood and in Egypt. So that was the same gods, um, verse twenty three said, put away the strange gods which are among you and incline your heart unto Jehovah, God of Israel. Verse twenty seven says, a stone was set up, he was like charging, giving them a charge, right? So he says to them, I have set a great stone under this great oak, near the sanctuary as a witness, lest you deny your God. So I thought about putting away the idols, lest you deny. If you cannot see your idol, i.e. the Trinity, how do you put it away?
Okay, you you asked a very good question and um you first have to understand how that works. It means that it's a thought in your mind. So to put something away from your mind, you have to upload new stuff to flush out the arrows and the affirmatives and so forth. So when you do that, that's what will be the manifestation of that.
Okay, so does that, how does that look? Does that look, um, I'm thinking that it looks like denying it.
Uh, yeah, you'll be denying what you used to believe.
Yeah.
Go to Genesis chapter thirty four, verse one through four, I think it is.
Genesis thirty four?
Correct.
Doing all this too, my mind and my memory have just continued to improve. Okay, um. Genesis thirty four, verse three and four?
One through four.
One through four. And Dinah, the daughter of Leah.
I made a mistake, uh, Genesis chapter thirty five, one through four.
Thirty five.
I can't, for some reason I can't flush that out of my brain.
And God said to Jacob, arise, go up to Bethel and dwell there and make there an altar unto God, that appeared unto you when you fed from the fled from the face of Esau, your brother. And Jacob said unto his household and to all that were with him, put away the strange gods that are among you and be clean, and change your garments. And let us arise and go up to Bethel, and I will make there an altar unto God, who answered me in the day of my distress and was with me in the way which I went. This is amazing, and they gave unto Jacob all the strange gods which were in their hand and all their earrings which were in their ears, and Jacob hid them under the oak, which was by Shuckam, there's the oak again. Wow.
Now that you said that, that's another study to do too, look at what oak is in the Bible, so to speak, and spirit of prophecy, but you was just asking about the strange gods and, you know, like how you said, the Trinity or whatever, well. The concept of jewelry, they never really gave me scripture to really hold fast to. But I was in a Sabbath school class that they were going over this scripture. And I was like, I was floored, I was like, what? They never sent, let me see these scriptures in terms of you talking about jewelry. You equated the jewelry is to gods.
Isn't that amazing?
And now think about it. When they were in the wilderness and Moses went up in the cloud, Aaron told them to give us all your metals, your jewelry or whatever, and make it a ca- a calf, a golden calf.
Wow.
So it just transforms to whatever you want to satisfy self.
Yeah.
So that is what's happening with people with Trinity, they're under this mesmerization. It, like how you say, it completely distorts your thoughts in your mind. I mean.
It does.
It take away from the image of marriage, it's not three people in the marriage, it's only two. The third person will be a spirit dwelling between the two of you, it's supposed to be the spirit of God.
They call it a family and Jesus is the son.
That's garbage.
I know, but.
That's that's seducing spirits and doctrines of devils. That's a cunning device.
I don't know why people find comfort in that, it always disturbed me, it haunted me. It wasn't a good feeling. I think if you don't think of Jesus as the Father, then you don't have to overcome.
I'm trying to tell you, that's how Trinity, what you're talking about is um a redemption concept. And by placing this God here, you're developing how you want your redemption to go through versus what is expressed in the Bible, telling you how the redemption goes through, they're just putting pieces together to try to make it fit and it doesn't work. Ah, man, this, oh my goodness, this is one here for you now. For I am persuaded that neither death nor life, nor angels, nor principalities, nor powers, nor things present, nor things to come, nor height, nor depth, I mean depth, nor any other creature shall be able to separate us from the love of God, which is in Christ Jesus, our Lord. That's what I've been trying to bring out to you.
That is another verse that I I wrote out yesterday for promises of, that I was reciting today and holding on to. And they're singing that song, the, we have this hope that burns within our heart.
Yes.
I love that song that we are, it was just the best song, Mrs. B.
Feel chills when you hear the whole congregation singing that song.
Yeah, it never fails, never fails.
For the coming of the Lord.
And then the second verse is to have a faith, living faith.
That's right. Ah, man, now let's go into what I was trying to bring out to you, I guess yesterday or the day before yesterday, watch this now. I'm gonna add this into the study too. These are they which are not defiled with women, for they are virgins. These are they which follow the Lamb wheresoever he goeth. These were redeemed from among men, being the first fruit unto God and to the Lamb. And in their mouth was found no gout, for they are without fault before the throne of God. For our conversation is in heaven, from whence all we look for the Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Philippians three twenty, be patient therefore brethren, unto the coming of the Lord. Behold the husband, husband man, waited for the precious fruit of the earth, and have long patience for it, until he received the early and latter rain, be also patient, establish your hearts, for the coming of the Lord dwelleth nigh, James five, seven and eight. And then I noticed when you read that, what you were reading, it says, di- did it say begotten son? I think it said begotten son.
In Revelation?
Yeah, that thing that you was talking about, deny.
You have not denied my name, and I was thinking of the book of First John when I said that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He says it so many times, the only begotten of the Father, the only begotten Son.
Yeah, when when I hear the only begotten son, that perks my, my mind jumps up there.
And also in the um three, three uh chapter three of Revelation where he says um to the church of the Laodiceans, verse fourteen, he says, I am the beginning of the creation of God. So he's correcting them, the Laodiceans, to know his name.
I am the beginning of the creation of God?
Yeah. The Philadelphians knew his name, did not deny his name, the Laodiceans knew to understand he's the beginning of the creation of God. The Laodicean church, it's their destiny to know it, they've got to know it.
What, what, what verse that is?
Uh, three, verse fourteen.
That sound like another study there.
You said a reference.
It just said, it kinda sound funny in the sense. Let me see what's in Spirit of Prophecy. Twenty-two hits.
Oh, wow. Wow, for that phrase?
Beginning of the creation of God.
Wow.
I'm telling you, this is how I study, when I study like this, it's just like stuff. The 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 shallow understanding you may have, where you really need to calibrate, this opened the door, man, and the floodgates come out, this is like latter rain.
Oh, wow. And Colossians one fifteen says he's the first born of everything.
I know about that, see, he born is different than creation, so that's what I'm trying to get clarification, how how is this really being um communicated, cause is he saying he is before all creation, maybe that's what it's saying.
I definitely think so, I think that he was the first, first the Father begot the Son.
Exactly.
Put him to work and let him create. He had to, I mean.
Well, yeah, that's I, that's what I understand, okay, so that's scriptures bringing that out, in the sense that it's leaving you that you need to connect scriptures to that. It's.
Yeah.
It's like it left you hanging that you need to make those dots connect to fill it out. So.
Yeah.
This is what I've been telling you in terms of if God did not have a begotten son, then based on how he has the government structured, nothing could really be done, because it would be in an absolute state, and basically, it's like he wouldn't be able to have a choice.
That's why I've been thinking about these things, because of that that which you brought up, and that also brought me to John, chapter one, that in the beginning was the Word. He was in the beginning, so then everything was created.
Mm-hmm. Well, see, like how you just said that, what happens is is that they have their doctrine in their mind, and then they try to make where he's talking about the beginning of creation, no, it's making reference. And then they try to make where he's talking about beginning of creation, no, it's making reference. It says, in the beginning, what was in the beginning? The word was in beginning. I mean, if we took that sentence and went in the English class, when we break down that sentence, they're gonna say that. The thing that is the, the subject is the word. The verb beginning, could beginning is a action. Or no, beginning is not action, the word was would be the, um, the verb.
What is big, the word beginning in the sentence, what part is that?
That, that is an adjective.
An adjective. Describes a noun, is that what you're doing? Ah, so would they say in that class that the one, the word. Which is the subject of the verse, had a beginning?
Well, that's what I'm trying to bring out, cause that's what that sentence is saying. That's why I always try to start with Christ, by telling the person, Christ was born in heaven. If they can't swallow that, then your whole structure of whatever you're trying to build will never stick. Cause you can come up with all kinds of shenanigans to make whatever doctrine to twist and turn. So that's why, when I keep emphasizing to you that. It is Christ's begottenness that makes everything linked together. It's. You could even put it as, it's God's go-to play or something.
Makes everything link, you said?
Yes, cause he transforming to whatever form is needed to link the thing.
I used to watch a cartoon called Astro Boy in the sixties and it was this, this robot guy, I mean. He was a person, so, so to speak, but he could transform into anything you needed. And I remember as a kid, I was thinking, guys like that. He just takes care of whatever you need, he'll become, he says, I am what I am.
I wouldn't even go of saying that, that they did that to have a mockery of the son of God. Because. I was going to school physically back in like twenty thirteen. And here in Orlando, they had all them billboards, they was redoing like Transformer, um, business or whatever. The movie Transformer, and I mean, I knew it from cartoon as a kid too. And I was like, you know, looking at the logo and stuff like that and it was like something ain't right here, I mean. I didn't take notice of it when I was a kid, but now with all what I've been learning, this is like right in your face. So I did a quick soft research and I was like, whoa, and that was at the time that. I was coming into the Father-Son truth and it just like, it made sense because that idea. Released the chains of blockage. And. I figured it out. They take mockery of Christ being able to be transformed for anything that you need. Even from the concept of any defective disease or anything. It all comes through the Word. I mean, let me start from like creation, he formed the body of Adam. And this is why I try to give you this part of the story because. The begottenness of, of Christ. In heaven was no baby, it was in his full mature statu- stature as his father that he was like a twin. And then I was listening to some guy, he was talking about the way he would describe that. To say that Christ was the same age as the Father. It would have to be for God to love the world that he gave his only, his only twin brother. And I'm like, that's, that's so spot on. But, um. His begottenness. And his ability to transform into any particular. I read in Spirit of Prophecy today, she talk about. Christ was the angel. He knew you see him as son of God, but then he's, you're saying he's, he's an angel, that's a transformation. And you just. Connecting. Pull here, connect there, pull here, connect there, you're making all this rewiring. And the scriptures say be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that's what's happening. You using this concept of Christ to renew your mind, your doctrine changes. Your mind changes, your behavior changes, but back to what I was saying with. He blow the breath into this structure that was laid out on the, the earth, that was formed from the earth. And it become a living soul. He didn't come as a baby and had to develop over a long period of time to get the education. In that one breath, everything that he needed to know was already in, allotted in that breath. Everything came to life. The spirit of God moved upon the face of the earth. We have to accept the words as they read. All the profoundness is in that and believing in that. Man, I'm just thinking about what needs to transpire. On an assignment that I need to get, but. It's like. You gotta invest money to make money, it's crazy. We down to the one minute mark. You could have another one tonight, but I don't know what time yet.
What time?
I haven't figured it out yet, but I'm thinking it's probably about eight, eight-thirty, something like that.
That's what we did last week.
Yeah.
Friday less busy day than it has been in the past. I'll get the garden watered in case, you know, I get it watered ahead.
Cause maybe, um, Lavina will come in.
I'll invite her.
I mean, she's always invited because she's in the messenger group and I put the link in there all the time.
Yeah, that's true.
Some people need-